Good evening, calling the meeting to order. Welcome, we are here on this Tuesday, January the 17th, 2023, our first meeting of the new year. Welcome to the West Hartford Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting. Let us please begin with the roll call, Charlotte.
Dr. Chang.
Here.
Mr. Goldman.
Here.
Dr. Harris.
Here.
Dr. Kameoff.
Here.
Ms. Nazarela.
Present.
Dr. Steinberg.
Here.
Dr. Thomas Farquharson.
Here.
Student Representative Caitlin Strifcave.
Here.
And Student Representative Megan Murphy.
Here.
Thank you so much, and Megan, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We do not have a revision to the agenda order, and now it is time for public communication. This is an opportunity where we're able to hear from you, your thoughts, your questions, your concerns, and your suggestions. Each individual is allowed three minutes to speak, and we ask that while you are speaking, to please be mindful of Charlotte who will hold up a card, a yellow card when one minute is remaining in your time, and a red card when your time has expired. Please know that we collectively as a board are attentively listening to you. However, it is policy that we do not make comments while public comment is taking place. I just took a peek at the list, and there were no names signed on the list, but I will still open, certainly ask to see if there are any public comments. And as we know per policy, we do prioritize hearing comments from those persons speaking on agenda items. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? On an agenda item? On a non-agenda item? All right, we shall pause and move on with the agenda. Starting with non-staff communications and reports, this is where we're able to hear from our student representatives. So thank you so very much. Let us begin with Caitlin, please, reporting on Hall.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have too much to report, so this will be kind of quick. But for music, we had Northern Regionals this weekend, so I know band and orchestra members participated in that. I don't believe any choir members did. We had our Martin Luther King Junior Day Celebration on Saturday, or nope, Monday, on actual Martin Luther King, yep, on Monday, so yesterday, and we had the choralists performed, and we had a student, Zella Jackson, speak. It was great, it was a really wonderful event. I was very happy to be there. And other than that, in terms of music, pops and jazz season has begun, so that will get progressively more and more busy as the year continues. Winter sports are moving along. Coco and Cram is hosted by Link Crew this week for our freshmen to prepare for exams, and other than that, it's midterms, midterms, and, oh yeah, midterms, yeah, a lot of midterms, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Megan, reporting from Hall. Conard, excuse me, Conard.
Good evening, everyone. So recently, we've had a couple exciting achievements with our sports at Conard. First being that a junior on the boys' basketball team, Riley Fox, was named Game Time CT Athlete of the Week, and soon after he reached that achievement, he scored his 1,000th point as a junior. So that was really amazing. Also, both girls' and boys' basketball play Hall this week, so that'll be, those are always fun games across town, and then also unified basketball practices have started. They have practice almost every week, and then those will lead up to a tournament in Glastonbury at the end of the season. So I've heard from people, that's just a really fun time. Some events coming up this week, tonight, there's a gap year fair at Conard for students who choose that route to meet with program providers from like all over the country. So it's a great opportunity for them. Our improv group at Conard, Parachute, has a performance this Thursday, and they always do an amazing job. And also with midterms coming up this week, the National Honor Society at Conard is hosting Study with a Buddy, that was today after school and tomorrow, and it's an opportunity for underclassmen to, just for any subject that they have questions on, or just with the midterm schedule, they've never studied for a big exam like this, so it's a great opportunity for them to work with those students. And the last thing I want to mention is, similar to Caitlin, yesterday we had a speaker, Afaf Alber, who's a senior at Conard, speak at the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day Celebration, and her speech was just really inspiring, and I think all who listened to it really appreciated it, so I want to give her a shout out, but that's it.
Thank you so much, Megan, thank you Caitlin. We always enjoy hearing from you, what is happening in school, and something we heard the both of you share is midterms, midterms, midterms. And so for that reason, please do know, we certainly understand you excusing yourselves early because you are students first, that is your priority. We wanted to encourage you to properly prepare for your midterms, midterms, midterms. All right, and with that, let us move on to unfinished business, where we have a motion by Dr. Lorna Thomas-Farquharson, Dr. Gail Harris, and Dr. Jason Chang to accept revised policies as a second reading. And again, we know that these policies were initially presented at our previous meeting for first reading, and now we are here to review them for a second reading as subsequent by a vote. We have the Community Relations Policy 1415, Possession of Deadly Weapons or Firearms, Policy 1425, Automatic External Defibrillators, Policy 2250, Uniform Treatment of Recruiters, 3515, Green Cleaning Program, 3560, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Fiscal Compliance, 4100, Family and Medical Leave, 8351, Meeting Conduct. And so, thank you so much, Ms. Anne McCurnan, for coming before us to assist in this process, and as we know teammates, with these policies, these are ones that will help us to be compliant with state and federal regulations and statutes. However, we certainly do want to duly receive your voice and thoughts in regard to what has been presented. And I speak on behalf of myself, and Gail and Jason as part of the Policy Subcommittee for the time you are taken to review this and discuss this. And so with that, let us open it up for discussion, but first, let me have a recommendation of the Board of Education, accept as a second final reading, the policies which were revised by the Board Policy Subcommittee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, discussion.
All policies.
Yes.
So I raised this one before, and I'll do it again. I'm struggling with the, I'm looking for here, 2250, I believe, the Uniform Treatment of Recruiters. I understand this has been vetted by shipment and good one of the town's lawyers, but it's been my understanding, and I've seen nothing to change it, that if an individual is 18 or over, they're considered an adult legally. So I'm struggling to understand why they would be prevented from talking to recruiter, particularly where, I believe, I'll stay away from that. So I guess if it was adjusted to say under 18, I'm fine with it, but in general, I'm going to vote no, even though I realize the lawyers are saying to vote yes, so. I will say, I was a little, I'm struggling with, we're telling 18-year-olds they can't talk to a recruiter, but we give parents very little leeway in the younger grades, so. I don't know, I'm still going to vote no, just because I think if you're over 18, you're over 18.
Just a distinction, if I could, just to clarify, and I think Anne would probably say the same. There's nothing in the law, and again, this is the statute piece, as you would know, it's there's nothing in the statute that says that, that an 18-year-old cannot speak with a recruiter, it's simply that the school will not provide the contact information if that's what the parents designate. There's nothing that says that the person can't walk up to them at the cafeteria when they have the table set up, there's nothing that says they can't simply Google on their phone, 1-800-ARMY, and call them as well. So just to clarify, we're not preventing them from doing so, we're just, the parents, we have to follow the parent designation on that per the law.
Right, no, I understand that, and I think I said that in my email, is they can go and do it on their own, it just, it just seems to me overly bureaucratic, but, and, I don't know.
I was just going to say the same as Andy, this is just about the parents having the right to not release a name, but the recruiters are in there, the students can walk right up to them and speak with them, and, and there's, there's no prohibition.
I get it, and then, it is, I'm sorry. I don't, I understand why we're following the policy, because the lawyers, the state is saying this is a policy, it just doesn't make sense to me.
All right, thank you. Gail.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with, on something that Ethan's talking about in a more general way. I mean, what is the situation on a kid in the school system who is beyond the age of 18 in terms of them making decisions and having the ability to function as an adult in other, other areas besides the one that Ethan's talking about? So if you had, you know, you have a student who's eight and a half, 18 and a half in the school, does, does the parent have the right to entirely control everything that goes on with that student, or does the student have some ability to control things?
Well, I don't know exactly what you mean by control, but we do work with the parents because the children are in school under our control, so under our, I shouldn't say control, but under our, under our supervision, and so in that way, they, we treat all the children the same. If a child said, I'm just leaving without permission, we, we work with the parents first because they are, they are with us under our supervision, and so I don't know exactly what you mean by control.
If there's a dispute, let's say between a parent and a child, you know, as to something, the student wants something and the parent wants something else, because that student is beyond the age of 18, who is actually going to determine that that would be considered a legal adult? Does the student override the parent, or is the parent override the student?
I think every situation, I think we would have to look at every situation individually, but, you know, we're going to work with the parents first to see what their, what their desire is, and we'll be listening to the students, but there are, you know, every situation is so unique that it's hard to cast one, one answer upon that.
Other questions or comments regarding the proposed, yes?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, so, and I feel a little funny saying this, to me, the parent, if the kid's under 18, the parent should have, be the primary decision maker, but over 18, it's just, that's the way our society is, so. So I just want to clarify, it's not that I want to take anything away from parents, but.
Understood.
Sorry to go on so long.
That's all right. Other questions or comments regarding all of the proposed policies before us as a second reading? All right, so with that, what we will do is we will go through each policy, and just we'll do a general call for yea or nay, and let us begin with Policy 1415, Possession of Deadly Weapons or Firearms. All of those in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. 1425, Automatic External Defibrillators, all of those in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. 2250, Uniform Treatment of Recruiters, all of those in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose?
Oppose.
Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Policy 3515, Green Cleaning Program, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. 3560, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Fiscal Compliance, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. 4100, Family and Medical Leave, all of those in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. 8351, Meeting Conduct, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. All right, well, thank you so very much, Anne, thank you so very much. Moving on now to new business, where we have adoption of the annual board meeting schedule for 2023, 2024. We have a recommendation that the Board of Education review and revise as appropriate the proposed annual board meeting schedule and adopt a final meeting calendar for the 2023, 2024 school year. Passing it to our superintendent.
You pretty much summed it up. On a annual basis, one of your obligations, well in advance of the next year, is to adopt a final meeting calendar. This is the calendar that is proposed. It includes some alterations, if you note on the November 8th, it's moved to the Wednesday, as you know, that is following the Tuesday, the election piece, and on the 21st is at 6:00 PM, if you remember correctly, it's at 6:00 PM, because then the council swears in new members at 7:00 PM, so it's, it's really a short perfunctory swearing-in meeting for you at that night. Other than that, includes the budget workshops, the public hearings, and all of the regular budget materials as well. It shifts to the Wednesday, the 21st, as always, because of the President's Day holiday, okay? Any questions? Happy to answer any questions or any modifications that you see that you need.
Teammates, anyway, let's do a motion, and we'll open it up for questions. Is there a motion to receive the proposed calendar annual board meeting schedule for the 2023, 2024 school year? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ari, thank you, Jason, discussion with what has been shared. All right, well, let us move to a vote. All of those in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, thank you very much. Moving right along, I'm stuttering over saying that, my oh my, okay. Moving right along to staff communications and reports. We now will have our superintendent's report, Dr. Murrow.
I'm telling you, moving right along. So, as, as the new year, a couple of things that I wanted to update, some of which I'd shared with the board before, but I think it's important to share with the public as well. Charter Oak International Academy was selected for an $11,000 CT Growin' for Connecticut Kids Grant. This is a statewide grant program to help establish and further farm-to-school programs throughout Connecticut schools. Hall High School received the AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award. This recognizes that Hall has achieved either 50% or higher female exam taker representation in one or both AP Computer Science courses, or a percentage of female computer science exam takers that meets or exceeds that of the school's female population. And as you know, that's really been a focus, our expansion of computer science throughout our K-12, or really our pre-K-12 curriculum. West Hartford Schools raised over $34,000 for Children's Connecticut Hospitals, part of the PJ, PJ Day celebrations before the holidays. Mary Listini, our townwide math curriculum specialist, and Carol Dibble, who's one of our math coaches, were both selected to the State Board of Education Model Curriculum Design Team for elementary mathematics, which is quite an honor, and it's great that they're going to be then helping the state redesign some of the curriculum for that. Courtney Warner, one of our elementary math coaches, was selected to represent, to present at the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics Regional Meeting in Baltimore in, I believe, about six weeks. And again, if you were able to be there, I know that, I saw Lorna and I saw Claire there for the MLK Day Celebration yesterday. It featured artwork from all 11 elementary schools, it featured fantastic student presentations, both in the music groups as well as the speakers and such, and it was really, really a fantastic experience, and a nice, a nice way for the community to come together, and I appreciate your word, Lorna, and the speech that you made, and your emceeing, and keeping everything going right around, and stalling as we waited for Senator Blumenthal to make it out of his car, and all that, all that good stuff. The last thing I have for you, as you're, you're leaving tonight, is the new items that are being distributed or being sold at the Hall and Conard cafeteria. These are the Titan Water and the Red Wolf Bottled Waters in reusable metal canisters and such. This is a promotional item that they are, it was basically outreach to us, and our food services director has, has gone ahead, and these are promotional items, that they're going to be piloting at each of the high schools, and so hopefully you'll see these Megan around, if you haven't seen them already or not, make sure you get one of the, the good ones. Oh, she knows. Anyways, it has, anyways, so that's my presentation for tonight, my update for you.
Thank you very much. Teammates, questions regarding the update we received? All right, thank you. And continuing on to staff reports and board discussions, do we have any updates from our board members and other boards and programs you're a part of? Yes, Jason.
Thank you, Lorna. So as, as some of you may know, many people are celebrating Lunar New Year, and one way that we wanted to help the community celebrate was by partnering with some other community organizations here in West Hartford. And on January 29th, it's a Sunday, we're going to be observing Lunar New Year in Blue Back Square at the old West Elm property, which is now a community exchange space. And we're going to be bringing in the new year, the year of the water rabbit, by helping to celebrate Black History Month there. So we'll be doing arts and crafts with children, the public library will be reading African-American and Asian-American books, and we will, I'll be teaching mahjong lessons, and so please come by and hang out, and, and we will also be featuring two artists who will be collaborating, making a live painting which will go up for auction, and all proceeds will benefit the Health Equity Solutions, which is an organization here in Connecticut striving for health equity. So thanks, please come by.
Thank you, Jason. Other updates?
Thank you, it is from 12 to 3, and you can register online, and I can share those details through some public means.
Thank you so much, Jason, thank you. And now moving on to routine matters and our financial report, where we are here to approve the financial report for the period ending November 30th, 2022. And as we have Liz Hewitt to join us at the table, thank you so very much. I believe Claire is giving the update today.
Thank you, Liz. Ethan and Anne and Liz and I all met earlier to discuss the report, so I'll share what was in the report. We, right now, will have a surplus of $50,000 at the end of the year. It's still early within the year, but everything looks on target. There's a surplus of salary, $625,000 for teacher's salary, and I think all staff salary, is it? Yeah, so it's all staff salary, and that reflects the challenge in hiring that we're seeing. There's some savings with teacher salaries of $225,000, and that's due to the new teachers making less, coming in with less experience. In general, the unemployment claims are down, showing a savings of $25,000 at year end, and the purchase services are up, that is based on hiring through temporary services to fill some of the unfilled hiring positions. Overall, everything looks on target, there, as I mentioned, more temp staff, so that number is higher. As far as the grants, there are some grant funds that are going to be refunded, the non, non-public funds of $13,485,000, or $485,000. That is going back to the parochial and private schools. They were given $128,000 through the grants, and West Hartford is kind of like a clearing house and works with those agents, those other schools, and it's typical that some money would be returned at the end of the year. Overall, the, the grants and use of the grants are being carefully monitored so that we take advantage of what we have. In the report, they're broken down into different fiscal years. There is a balance of $4,654,000 as part of the S R III grant, and we have until September 30th, 2024 to use that. So in general, there's still balance in the grant funds, and we're in good shape. For the Special Programs Fund report, enrollment, there's a deficit of $30,000 for summer school, and, but an increased investment of interest income of 30, so it's a wash, things are good in that fund. Some transportation increases are part of the summer school increase. And then in Nutrition Services, we're only a couple weeks into the non-free lunch for everyone, so the data is not quite there yet about any changes. Probably next month, we'll have a better idea of what the percentage drop is in lunch, though they are carefully monitoring kids, families that were already getting services or any kind of financial benefit would automatically be into the free and reduced lunch program, but in a month or so, we'll see a better what impact the paying for lunches will have on the families, and the district is going to work with families to make sure that no child is hungry. There is a lot of work, just on a side note, on the state level, and, and hoping that that makes some benefit. In general, the fund for the nutrition services will have a balance of $2938,000, and that is going to be invested into some of the equipment and higher energy efficiency, getting some things over a 10-year period to make sure that our cafeterias are functioning at better efficiency and replacing some of the outdated equipment. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much, Claire. Questions, comments regarding our fiscal report?
Can I ask just one question, maybe not exactly related, but the program for the...
The program for the free lunch ended in the beginning of the month?
January.
Okay. And there's no additional...
And there's no additional funding that we're using towards that?
So the universal free meals ended, and so when students came back from the winter break, we went back to a paid meal service. However, families that already qualified for the National School Lunch Program, which for our families is about 26% of our population, they are still receiving free meals. Everyone else went back to a paid model. And as Claire had mentioned, we really have seen a drop-off in our meal count over these first couple of weeks of about 33%. It's been pretty material. But, you know, everyone was kind of getting adjusted to that. We're going to see how that levels off over this month and really see how the fund is poised financially to move forward.
If you remember, we had also shared that the funding for the free meals, in essence, ran out in, when we were right around Thanksgiving time or so.
The first week of December.
And we made the decision, and the board had made the decision, to go ahead and extend that until the, until the natural break for winter there.
Yes.
So will it be possible next month to show how much was spent doing that, so differentiate from what it is going forward?
Yes. Yes, we'll have that information, and we'll be able to show that in the report.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
An interesting note, too, that was shared, is that even though there was an increase in the amount of kids who had lunch, it was still done with the current equipment, the current staff, and so there isn't a change. If the lunches drop off, it's not a staff change. You know, there isn't a change there. They're very efficiently fed more kids, and they would be able to continue.
Other, excuse me, questions or comments regarding the report? All right. Thank you. So now seeking a motion that the Board of Education approve the financial report for the period ending November 30th, 2022. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Ethan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Claire. All of those in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Liz. Thank you, Claire. Moving on now to approval of the minutes, seeking a motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting of December 20th, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ari. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jason. Discussion. All of those in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Moving on to information and reports, board members, communications and reports, reports from other boards and organizations. All right, hearing none. Any other information and discussions? Hearing none? Future business? Oh my. All right. Announcement of future meeting dates, Tuesday, February 7th, 2023, regular Board of Education meeting, where we will have adoption of the CIP at 7:00 here in Room 314, followed by Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023, regular Board of Education meeting, 7:00 here in the legislative chambers, Room 314. Is there a request for any future agenda items? Gail.
Yeah, thank you. I would like to request that we get a presentation or a report on the DESA evaluation, which is a evaluation that's being done, I believe at this point, in all the schools, but I'm not entirely sure that that's true, but it's an evaluation of the student in the SEL program. And it's a little bit unique because it's not, the way I understand it, it's not really evaluating, the child is not being evaluated, it's the teacher that's evaluating the child. And I think it would be useful to understand how that program works and what information's being collected and how it's being used. So it's called DESA, D-E-S-S-A.
Thank you. Any other request for future agenda items? Hearing none. Comments from visitors? Do we have any visitors here that would like to make any comments? Seeing none. We do not have an executive session. I'm just making sure, pinching myself, all right. Seeking a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Is there, thank you, Ari, and a second by Ethan.
I've been up since 3:00.
Meeting adjourned at 7:32.
Wow.
Record time.
The 3 o'clock date.
I asked for it.